Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order a regular city council meeting for Monday, January 9th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. First order of business is our opening ceremony, which will consist of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their life. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, will you please take roll?
Mayor Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor Protendold.
Here.
Councilmember Karafodis.
Here.
Councilmember Squires.
Here.
Councilmember DeMichael.
Here.
Councilmember Earl.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
You do have a quorum with all seven members, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Miller?
Yes, I just wanted to note, for the approval of the agenda, we will have to make a revision. Item 7A, the presentation for the audit by Plan Moran, we're going to move that till the 23rd agenda.
Okay, thank you. Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember DeMichael.
I move to approve the agenda as of January 9th, 2023, with the presentation 7A moved to our meeting on January 23rd.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Witt. Any discussion from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next, we have a recognition for our Holiday Light Contest. I'm going to come down to the podium. So we started this a little while ago, what, a year or two ago? And so this year's grand champion is the Bandi family, Joe and family, if you would like to come up. Since I heard they did most of the work climbing on the roof and everything, you made them. So we have a plaque, and it says, "Congratulations to the Bandi family of 32137 Fall Morrell Street on being named the grand champion of Garden City's 2022 Holiday Lighting Competition. The Garden City Council wants to acknowledge your hard work and enthusiasm in decorating your home to the joy of the entire Garden City community. Your display not only brought holiday cheer to your neighbors in Garden City, but also to many well-wishers who stopped by to view your home. For your dedication to the holidays and for bringing delight to people of all ages, you are hereby recognized as the 2022 Grand Champion, January 9th, 2022." Congratulations. Okay, comments from state and county officials? I don't see any. Presentation, that's off until the 23rd of January. No community events, petitions and communications. Item 10, public hearing. Mr. Marsiniak. What's that?
Yes, we're having the public hearing, and he's going to make an... No.
No, he explained it.
Just to give you a brief synopsis on this item, back in November, we were notified by the Rouge Valley Authority, the people who handle the sanitation waste, actually sewage waste, I should say, that they were going to adjust our rate. Beginning of December, we found out what the new rate was going to be effective January, and that's usually, we pass the increases, and then this time, fortunately, we had a decrease of five and a half percent. We usually pass those rates on to the customers. So really, this hearing is just, I want to make a mid-year adjustment to the rate of five and a half percent.
Thank you. Okay, now open the public hearing to anybody that would like to speak on it. Anybody want to speak on the public hearing? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Item 11, consent agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember DeMichael.
I move to approve the consent agenda on items A1 through 4.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any discussion from the table? General public? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. Item 11B, action items. Number one. Item 1.
Mayor?
Fiscal year, hold on, 2022-23 Sewer Rate Ordinances. Councilmember, or Mayor Protendold?
I'd like to move to adopt the ordinance to amend Section 53.04 of Chapter 53, Title 5 of the City of Garden City Code, providing for rates and charges for sewer service and providing for billing for sewage disposal services effective January 1, 2023.
Support. Support from Councilmember Earl. Any discussion from the table?
I was just going to ask Mr. Marsiniak, how often does the, do the rates go down like that? Is that very unusual? I never heard of it.
They usually wait till their audits complete in November and reassess the rate. So last year, they made no change to the rate. The year before that, it was very, very few percentage points, even if that, it was like $1,000 on the 20... It went up just a tad. So we just left it at the same rate. So they just, they really don't adjust it. I've been here three years. This is the only real significant rate that we, reduction that we've seen. And so a lot of that, if you remember, back in 2019, you had three communities that were just leaving the system, and there was a lot of, I guess, uncertainty of where our rates were going to be and what was going to happen going into the future, with three of the Western communities going over to the Ypsilanti side for their sewage disposal. So I get, you know, they, like I said, in November, they notified they were going to make a change to the rate, and it was significant in December. So, you know, like I said, to be passed that along to the consumers.
I'm sure that we're all going to appreciate that.
Yep. So usually, unfortunately, we can't do this at budget time. I really have no idea what they're going to adjust it to. So it's going to always probably kind of be a mid-year thing. After they finish their audit, they see if they need to adjust the rates, and then they do so at, you know, Jan, in December, January of the following year. So they said, since I've been here, we really haven't had a need to do that. It's been, the sewer rate's been flat for the three budgets that I've done, and now we're going to change it for this one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? From the general public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Item 2, Wayne County Veteran Services. Mr. Dackerty?
All right, thank you, Mayor. For a number of years now, we've had the American Legion at the Maplewood Center with a representative working with our veterans through the VA process, specifically the healthcare issues that they may have. They actually tell veterans, come to see us first before you even start the VA process. Wayne County has a different program, which meets with veterans that have financial hardships. So veterans looking for help with their utility bills or even rent can meet with a representative from Wayne County Veteran Services to hopefully receive funding to help them with some of their, some of their bills. So now that the American Legion representative was moved to an office in Radcliffe Center, we actually have more room in that office to add an additional table, which is, would be the Wayne County space to offer veterans financial hardship help out of the same space. So tonight's request is to move forward and offer in Wayne County Veteran Services some office space, along with the American Legion space in the Radcliffe Center. That's what this contract for is basically allowing them to utilize space. There is no charge for them, as there's no charge for American Legion also.
Thank you. Councilmember Squires?
I move to approve a three-year occupancy agreement with Wayne County regarding the establishment of a Wayne County Veterans Services Office within the Radcliffe Center.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Karafodis. Any discussion from the table?
I think it's a good thing. We have a lot of veterans that live here in the city that would probably do need help, and this will eliminate them having to go downtown.
Right, I believe the only, the only other office is downtown, so if they have a hardship, it's a double hardship if they have to go all the way downtown to try and get help. So I agree. Good, it's, it's good. Any comments from the general public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor, 7-0, passes. Item 3, the MDOT Annual Road Permit Resolution. Mr. Omen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is for our annual road permit with MDOT. This permit authorizes to perform work on the right-of-way of Ford Road.
That's just yearly that we do this, right?
Correct.
Every year? Okay. Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Earl?
I move to adopt the attached resolution authorizing the execution of the Michigan Department of Transportation Road Permit for the 2023 calendar year.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Karafodis. Any discussion from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes 7-0. Item 12, Other Business. Radcliffe Center update, and Mr. Dackerty?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Tonight's presentation will be an abbreviation of my fuller presentation, which I gave on September 13th, 2022, for those that want to see more detail. To learn more about how Radcliffe came about, please refer to the meeting of past September. So tonight, I'm pleased to announce the city's been awarded $2.1 million as a grant from the federal government for the Radcliffe Center. For the past couple of years, I've been working with our county, state, and federal officials to obtain funding firstly to renovate the Maplewood Center, but since we took over the Radcliffe Center, my requests were changed in their focus to our new community center. Last spring, I worked with Congresswoman Talib Staff to sharpen the details of my request of federal consideration, and over Christmas break, we were informed the Garden City was awarded the $2.1 million in the federal omnibus bill for the construction of athletic gymnasium, a new entrance for safety and security, as well as some other related projects. So as of today, within the next year, the city will have its first athletic gymnasium for youth and adult sports, including basketball, volleyball, and of course, pickleball. So in the satellite view of the property on the screen, it's very clear how much acreage the city now owns around the Radcliffe Center, which is, as you see in the yellow box, is the potential gymnasium. The smaller yellow box is the entrance. So currently, the western entrance opens up into a hallway, leaving essentially no space for a proper lobby. The addition of the 1,600-square-foot lobby would control access and make the lobby more attractive, more attractive entrance. As for the larger yellow square, that would be the 7,000-square-foot athletic gymnasium that would be added on to the other side of old locker rooms. So we actually won't need to build locker rooms, they already exist. The large red box is what used to be a small gymnasium for the former junior high school, but was changed to a theater by Schoolcraft College. That room will continue to be used as a theater, as well as the space to host senior luncheons, events such as daddy-daughter dances, et cetera. The senior Christmas luncheon, just a few weeks ago, had more space there at the Radcliffe Center in that room than they've ever had at Maplewood Center. So that's a great thing. As I mentioned in my earlier presentation, described more of the project in detail, but now, I'd like to just give you a quick overview of what's been done in the past few months and some ideas of what's yet to come. So one of the first projects which we focused on was the move of the food pantry to Radcliffe. As indicated on the screen, the large pantry is filling up with even more available food for those in need. In the picture on the left, you could see the new refrigerators and freezers, which were recently added to the food pantry. From the city, from what the city walked into, a picture on the left side of the screen to the, in the before picture, to what the dance room has become now, the picture on the right has been tremendous. That's four classrooms were turned into two large dance rooms, which will benefit the city for decades. And keep in mind, the picture on the left is actually two rooms, but we actually have two rooms that look exactly like the picture on, on the right. The slide shows, this next slide shows before and after of the dance program waiting room. Instead of parents who are waiting for their children to finish dance class, looking for a place to relax and sit or just hang out, a dance room waiting room was created. As for the new computer lab, we hope to have the computer lab fully open for classes within the next couple of weeks. The equipment is there, just hasn't been officially loaded yet. On the screen now is the before and after pictures of the adult game room. As indicated on the screen, the game room houses a variety of large games, such as two billiard tables, a ping-pong table, foosball table, table shuffleboard, dartboard, and a set of beanbags. There's also a large television screen broadcasting sporting events, as well as a couple of seating areas. The next room we're looking to start to focus our energies on is the teen tech room for the city's youth between the ages of nine and 15. One of the most vulnerable ages, age groups is exactly the target for this type of programming. That facility is currently being programmed for construction. On the screen now is the large cardio room. As of a couple of weeks ago, the room in the picture was actually two different classrooms. Staff removed the walls between the two rooms. We now have one large cardio room. Our current yoga class was already too big for the small cardio room, but now they can actually add more participants. The senior center, this is the latest picture of the Senior Fitness Center, still missing the cable machines, which are coming any day now, but the heavy commercial fitness equipment will only be available to our registered seniors, and is not meant to be a replacement for a professional gym membership, but actually just assist on what else is out there in our community. As for the arts and craft room, there's before and after pictures a little bit. Just the other day, the chairs and tables were put into the room over the new flooring, so a new program can start, actually, as we speak. Then the veteran services. On the screen now is the before and after pictures of the veteran service office I just mentioned a little bit ago. The difference in the new office space is stark and makes the new office space more inviting to our military veterans. Fully open now is the Garden City Gift Shop and Cafe. As you can see on the screen, the store has a great selection of t-shirts, sweatshirts, and hats, all bearing the Garden City name. Half the shop includes a place to pick up drinks, as well as upcoming snacks. We have a selection of apparel for the graduates of Garden City East and West, who continue their rivalry to this day, apparently. There are shirts, hats, and hoodies to show your pride. I can say at this point, West is beating East in sales, just so you know. For those that didn't hear that, West is best. I've heard that a lot since we built this place over there. To make Radcliffe even more inviting as a place for our residents to relax and enjoy, we established several seating areas throughout the building to meet with friends or take a break while working, walking the .16-mile lap around the inside of the building. Seating areas make the facility even more comfortable. That's .16 miles, so six laps around the interior is about a mile, and we're going to be putting up some signage. There are already people that do come in the morning and walk the inside. On the screen now is before and after pictures of the grant-funded Family Resources Center's offices. Maybe difficult a little bit to see the difference, but the door in the middle of both pictures is the same door. So it's been renovated with new ceilings, carpets, and office spaces, and that is a positive, successful fundraising, grant-funded program that we have. An item that was approved last fall and completely, completed recently was the removal of the 1960s hallway lights and ceiling tiles, and the installation of new ceiling tiles and LED lighting. As indicated in the before and after pictures, the hallway actually appears taller and much brighter, with the change that should reduce our lighting bills by about 50%, thereby making the decision one which ends up becoming a payback to the city and saving us money in the long run. On the next few slides, you'll be able to see the breakdown per room and its costs. Some of the expenses have already been paid, while others are yet to be purchased or brought before the council. What is being shown now is expected money to be spent, but none of the money coming directly from the city's tax budget. The first slide shows the cost of the building, as well as the dance rooms and waiting room for the guests of the dance program. As indicated in this slide, the expenses for the fitness room and the game room are being covered through a Wayne County grant I applied for last year. Next week, we expect to open the senior fitness room and the game room for adult usage. I should say, when we say adult game room, we're referring to 16 and above, because there's going to be a separate play area for kids that are in the middle school and younger. So when I say adult, it just means older people. As indicated on the, which one were on there? Oh my goodness.
Veterans.
Yeah, the veterans. Yes. The third slide lists the cost for the renovation of the Veteran Services Office, the Arts and Craft Room, and four classrooms. The four classrooms are being kept as classrooms to be used for everything from SAT and ACT testing, to group meetings such as health seminars and drug and alcohol anonymous meetings. In fact, this spring, we have a rental contract with a Michigan Testing Company for about $8,000 to use the four rooms for two weeks of testing. Now on the screen is the breakdown between the large and small cardio rooms, as well as the patio furniture and the Family Resources Offices. We held off on putting the patio furniture out there, mainly waiting for the fencing to be installed, and it's being installed today, as we speak. The computer lab should be in full operation within the next couple of weeks, while the gift shop is fully open. As anyone walking into the Radcliffe Center will now notice that the hallways are brighter, and they do include the seating areas. This slide includes the breakdown of the miscellaneous items that affect the overall facility. The next two slides include projects that have yet to be started. As indicated and stated earlier, an athletic gymnasium will be built on-site to be the city's first full-size gymnasium, not affiliated with the schools. Rehabbing the theater, as well as creating a card room, is also in the works. The teen tech room and the children's imagination room are expected to be two of the busiest rooms in the facility overall, as they're both will cater to the youth in the community, and both rooms are being designed right now. So available funding, when considering the funding for the facility, one-time expenses, there are four areas which are significant. First of all, thanks to our Congresswoman Talib, our city is being awarded the $2.1 million from a federal omnibus bill for the construction of Radcliffe. Secondly, through the federal funding of the American Rescue Plan Act, the city received $2.7 million. The plan was to put 500 towards a police station rehabilitation, which is 30 years old this year, 500,000 towards City Hall, which is just over 60 years old, $700,000 towards the fire station addition, along with $400,000 stake grant I received last year, and the remaining $1 million put towards the Radcliffe Center. Part of the request to receive the $2.1 million from the feds was the city to put up a million dollars towards Radcliffe Center. In addition, I still have a request to Wayne County for funding with the same idea of putting up towards $1 million towards the Radcliffe Center. Third, through a Wayne County grant of $200,000, we had the opportunity to create the computer lab, the game room, and the fitness center. A fourth area of funding comes from the Family Resource Center, which is 46,000, will come from the revenue generated by the FRC through their grant-funded programs. Another form of funding for Radcliffe Center is the direct revenue generated from the two main groups renting the facility. At around $150,000 per year in rent, we have the ability to cover some one-time projects now, and then later cover the costs for ongoing programming. And it should be noted again that none of the funding is coming directly from tax money budgeted in the city. There is no tax increase for these purchases. The one-time purchases are being made without affecting the tax revenue the city receives from the taxpayers of Garden City. The slide on the screen now is showing all the expenses from the earlier slides, including many projects that are in the future and have not even started. One quarter of the ARPA funding includes the $210,000 for the building purchase itself. When we talk about putting a million dollars into it, that includes the actual purchase of the building at this point. The numbers you're seeing is not what was spent already, but what could be spent if all the projects that were described earlier are finished, with none of the money coming again from city taxes. As indicated, the ARPA funding, which I mentioned, investing $1 million into the center, the budget presently spending all the money for all those projects would be about $860,000, less than a million we're talking about. So in the end, the Radcliffe Center has been coming along nicely, as we begin offering our residents of all ages a safe place to spend time, full of educational opportunities. With the investment of federal funding for the gymnasium, this spring will be very busy designing a new hub for our youth and adult athletic programming. And as always, great things are happening in Garden City. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dackerty. Does anyone have a question for Mr. Dackerty?
Do we have a budget for the $2.1 million?
No, that was, we just received that itself. We haven't broken it all out yet. We expect, we know what we expect for the gymnasium, the entrance, what the cost, but we don't have that broken down yet. So that's, that's something I was talking to the finance director, you know, from your email and inquiring about that, about getting together. And part of our budget adjustments, as he mentioned even about this change for the earlier item, is coming to the council to say, here's the detailed breakdown that we didn't really have last year, now that we have the money coming in. And also, if we potentially have the additional county money coming in, that's going to make a change also.
So right now, we got all these wonderful things for our city, and then most of them are already paid for, not of our taxpayers' budget, but out of other grants. So we have the $2.1, you're getting more. Are we spending all that on Radcliffe, and it's required to be spent only on Radcliffe?
That is correct. The $2.1 million is directed specifically at the athletic program, the gymnasium, the entrance, and some, you know, side efforts, but it can't be taken to anywhere else, no.
Okay, so then we definitely need a budget for $2.1 million that's going to be spent over there. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I want to know if you would mind sending me the presentation, along with your notes, so I can kind of go through it.
Absolutely.
At my leisure. Thank you.
It's easier to pause these slides.
I thought we were getting a copy of that today, too.
Yep, I can print that out for you, absolutely.
I have had a chance to walk through, not with the new lighting yet, unfortunately, but seeing the rooms built up, I went and had a couple of classes there when I was going to Schoolcraft, and seeing the difference now that the building shows, just with the few rooms being remodeled, I'm really excited for, you know, people my age, or any age in the city, to have another place to go for, you know, events and activities, to, you know, hang out, build friendships, and, you know, participate in activities. So I appreciate the update. Seeing all of the pictures is nice now with the new lighting. I can't wait to go see it.
The athletic program, I think, that we can add now is something that's just surprising for a city as large as we are, that we didn't have separate gyms. And for adult activities, as well as, you know, high school age, and even the youth basketball and sports, that's going to be a great asset for us, yes.
I'd just like to say that I'm glad that we actually covered just about, I think, every age possible, from seniors on down. Everyone will have a place and a spot to go. Middle schoolers, keep them off the street. I think it's, I think it's great, so, thank you. Okay, item 13, public comment. Anybody wishing to make a comment? Three minutes, and anybody wishing to speak? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, Mike Jones, Garden City. I just wanted to know, Doc, do you have a target date yet for that gymnasium?
We don't really answer, but our guess is within the year. Uh, we will, the council is going to be receiving, you know, we're going to put the bid out and then work it through this spring, and hopefully have something going by this fall.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mulder?
All I want to do is say thank you for all the work you put into this, and I know it wasn't that easy. And I know you put a lot of work into it, and you had to do a lot of, uh, uh, fanfare, I guess, to get all that money, and I appreciate it. I misspoke the last time when you were tapped from both sides of this podium, and I said, what can I say? There's a whole lot I wanted to say, but I didn't, and thank you again.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, uh, city managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a point, as I mentioned a couple of times, Congresswoman Rashida Talib and her staff in helping us get the $2.1, we, uh, I know we see some new leadership coming in in our representatives, especially at the state level, so I think, uh, Garden City's been passed over for many, many years, and I think we're going to see some great changes with our new leadership we have there, so just again, uh, they have a choice to help or not help depending on other communities, and I think that's a, that's a great thing for us, so thank you to her and her staff.
I agree. Uh, Councilmember Earl?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a few things. I, I didn't comment it when you were talking about it, but it's a, a Radcliffe Center phenomenal job on that, um, and look at how much we've gotten that hasn't cost the city and the taxpayers. Um, I wish I was young enough to use all of those, but I feel like I'm old enough to qualify for the seniors, so I'll be there tomorrow. And then congratulations to the Bandys on their award, and also to Joe Bandy for being, uh, named president of the GCYA, which is a organization near and dear to my heart. I know that he's going to do a phenomenal job, and I look forward to working with him and, uh, trying to improve some of the things that GCYA does, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Karafodis?
Um, I don't have much. Sorry, I don't have much. Um, I agree that Radcliffe Center is just totally awesome. I saw the fencing go up, it looks really good by the garden and by the playground, so I was looking forward to seeing it in the front there. I think that's going to be a pretty cool hangout for the kids in the summertime if they just want to, you know, teenagers, if they just want to chill out there and stay out of trouble. Other than that, I'm looking forward to the leadership also. I think that our new leadership is going to make a difference in Garden City, for sure. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Squires?
Um, yes. Congrats to the, uh, Bandy family on your award for your holiday decorations, and I want to send my condolences to the Kates and Taylor family. In the loss of, um, Stephen Kates, who was brother, uncle, cousin, um, he will be greatly missed, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Dol.
Just a couple of real quick things. Um, some of the seniors at the towers here behind us got ahold of me and asked that I give a public thank you to Garden City Public Schools and to the city for their ride through Heinz to see the lights. We went down on a couple of buses, and it was very enjoyable, and then headed back to the towers, had some donuts and hot chocolate.
Yes, we did.
Uh, the other thing is, again, Kiwanis is holding an open house this Wednesday, January eleventh, at 7:00 PM. It will be at the Adfellows Hall, which is at the corner of Black and Merriman. Um, come on by and see what the Kiwanis does. That's all I've got.
Thank you. It was a enjoyable light fest ride with the seniors. Uh, Councilmember DeMichael?
Um, I also wanted to say well done, and I'm glad to be a part of the project I've been going on with the Radcliffe Center, uh, and congratulations to the Bandys. I also had a question. Um, I ended up having a water main break of, last week or over the weekend, and anytime something happens in my location or my home, I like to go through what the residents would have to do to report that back to City Hall. So in doing so, um, I've, I've seen that, um, it might be beneficial for us to possibly, and if we can take a look into it, adding a NICSIL update. Once I went through there and I saw there was no, um, updates for water main breaks, it said water main breaks, no alerts. Uh, I don't know if that's something that can go out through NICSIL or at least go up on the alert page, but just something from the resident's standpoint is doing that as a resident would, something I think that might be beneficial. So if we could just take a look into that, I'd appreciate it.
I'll get together with staff to see how we can do it. Sometimes it gets a little confusing because it may be just a quick break, and if we put out too much information, people get confused, is it them, is it not them, so we'll have to look at how we can isolate it, if it's this area, this neighborhood. I think you mentioned about the website too. We'll see how that drives with the website itself.
Right, because right on our city's site, when you go to it and you go to the water main break area, and it's, once you get there, it does say there's an alert section, but I don't know if it's specifically tied in for the alerts to pop up if it has to go through NICSIL. I don't know the, the ins and outs of it, but I do know that that would be beneficial, because had I seen it up there, I would be like, oh, I don't need to call to report this.
Yep.
So something just from a resident's standpoint viewing, outside looking in.
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Witt?
Um, just a congratulations to the Bandys. Um, I did have a chance to drive by and see their house. It did look awesome, and I appreciate everyone else who decorated their house and did send in for a chance to win. Um, I hope we keep this going. Uh, I've been a part of it for the last two years, taking pictures, helping out with the Communications Department, and it's an awesome experience to get through and see them. Wasn't able to do it this year, but, um, next year, if you guys decorate your house, please do submit your houses. We appreciate it. That's it, Mayor.
Yeah, Councilman Witt makes a, a good point. As we were looking at some of the houses that submitted, there were a lot of houses that were outstanding also and did not submit at all. We actually had to check the list to look for them, and they didn't put in, so hopefully in the future, they know that, yeah.
All right, I was gonna say that, that, but, uh, okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Miller?
I have nothing to say to you.
Nothing? Okay, I just have a couple of things. Uh, again, congratulations to the Bandy family. Uh, Joe, I still can't believe you made your wife climb up on the roof, but, uh, you know, uh, but it was nice, and there were a lot of nice houses, as Mr. Dockerty said, that, that were out there that didn't turn in to be in the contest. So if you don't turn in your, your address, your house, uh, even if it's the nicest one, you have no chance at winning. It's like the lottery. If you don't play, or if you don't get in, you, you can't win. Again, I am having a town hall meeting after the next council meeting, which is January twenty-third. That will start approximately ten minutes after the council meeting. That way, people that don't want to stick around can leave, and those that maybe live close enough and didn't want to be in the council meeting can, can show up. Uh, so approximately ten minutes afterwards, we'll, we'll have a town hall meeting. Uh, if, it'll, it'll be right here. It'll be in, in chambers, um, and we'll set that up. Today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and Garden City has always been known, or I've always believed them to be the best department around, uh, and I just wanted to say thank you to all the men and women in blue that, that risked their lives so we, we can be safe, and I think it's a great, uh, a great day to honor our, our police. So to all our men and women in blue, thank you very much. And, uh...
And brown.
And brown. Okay, I'll give you that one. Wayne County sheriffs.
Well, it was.
Okay, item, uh, sixteen, uh, closed session. Need a motion? Need a motion to go into closed session?
I move that we go into closed session.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Squires made the motion, supported by Councilmember Karafodis.
Yes.
Do we have a second? Mr. Miller, will you take role?
All right. Uh, again, this, it's seven thirty-nine. This is to, uh, recess to a closed session regarding a written legal opinion. Uh, the first to vote will be Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
And Councilmember Karafodis.
Aye.
Councilmember Witt?
Aye.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Councilmember DeMichael?
Aye.
Councilmember Dol.
Aye.
And Mayor Jacobs.
Aye. Okay, at this time, we are going to recess the meeting to go into closed session.